You're watching City Channel 4, your window to our community.
All right, which leads us to the work session agenda for Tuesday, August 1st. So we're going to start with the tobacco-free thing, right? Yeah, okay. So the first item is to discuss Johnson County Health Department and Parks Commission recommendations to pursue a tobacco-free Parks and Trails code amendment. Clay, you're going to speak. Hi, good evening. It's nice to see you.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thanks for inviting the Parks and Recreation Commission here this evening. I'm Clay Klaus and I'm the current chair. And in support, we have members Suzanne Bentley and Wayne Fett. And the other members that could not be with us this evening are Larry Brown, Kara Hammond, Lucy Lorien, Angie Smith, Jamie Venzen, and Joe Yonker. But we have their full support. And we do encourage the council to amend the current code to extend the smoke-free areas to include all parks and trails and to include all forms of tobacco. And to that end, we have a presentation by Susan Valetta with the Johnson County Public Health Department. And that will be followed by Julie Seidel Johnson introducing the Iowa City Parks Master Plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Clay. Hi. Susan Valetta with Johnson County Public Health. And I had the opportunity to chat with Julie and the commission at an earlier date. And honestly, Iowa City has been, you know, ahead of the curve in tobacco-free policies for quite some time before bars and restaurants even went smoke-free with the Smoke Free Air Act. You were doing those kinds of things here locally to even just, what, two summers ago now where some of you council members that are sitting here right now decided to add electronic cigarettes to that ordinance. So you kind of have a history of tobacco and nicotine-free ordinance and policy work. People have just grown to kind of expect the same sort of protection in outdoor spaces as they have indoor spaces for so long at this point because there's really no risk-free level of secondhand smoke. We know that. Not to mention the cleanup and the fire risks would be reduced. I do want to point out, I know that you received the information about a short survey we did last summer into the fall. And you can see the results there. They're pretty promising for supporters that were residents of Iowa City. If you have any questions about that, let me know. And, you know, keep in mind, those spaces, you know, I know that the Parks Commission and the park staff, that having those environments that people can get together in, those healthy places for outdoor recreation are important. And that tobacco use doesn't necessarily coexist with that view of the recreation and those kinds of spaces, right? Also, keep in mind that it's also about social norms, right? And role modeling, that if we're in spaces where our kids are still seeing that smoking is the normal thing to do, they're really not. This is a community that, you know, you've shown through ordinances and other work with other organizations, that it's not kind of the normal thing to do anymore. So an ordinance like this upholds the city's kind of ongoing commitment really already to make tobacco and nicotine-free spaces the norm. So, and Johnson County Public Health can help with whether it's any technical or communications assistance and free signage. So just so that you're aware of what I can do. Thanks for your attention.
Thanks, Susan.
So at this point, what we're just looking for is kind of the head nod, go ahead from council to prepare the code amendment if you're comfortable. Or if you'd like more information, what exactly would help you make that decision? We can bring that back to you as well.
I'd say go ahead.
Support it.
I go along with that also.
Well, I'm going to make some friends mad by asking at least one or two questions because surely there are people in the community who want to be able to smoke in certain parts of parks, especially when the parks are large and there's ample room for smoke to diffuse. To diffuse. So basically, what I'm wondering, trying to channel that kind of voice, is whether there are some subtle modifications that could be made to a blanket tobacco-free rule that applies uniformly to every one of our 42 parks regardless of scale or character. And as we know from the Parks Master Plan that we're going to be considering, there's considerable variation among parks in terms of scale and character. So that's the question out there. Might there be some subtle variation that would be called for? And I don't know what the rest of you think about that. And I don't know what you folks think about that. But I don't think we should just kind of uniformly, quickly, without any kind of discussion really, make this decision. I think we need to have some kind of discussion. So there you go.
I guess I'd have two questions. One, my first question before you ask that question was, does this, you may have said it, sorry, I was kind of zoning a little bit, but does this also include e-cigarettes? And then this, so yes, okay. Sorry, I missed that. The second question is, kind of going back to, I think, a former conversation that we had maybe a year, year and a half ago, there was discussion as far as, I think it was banning e-cigarettes or banning cigarette use in all city buildings or whatever the case may be.
E-cigarettes.
Did we have a similar kind of, what you're kind of proposing, a separate space that could be designated within those situations? Okay. So if no, then I wouldn't be inclined to do it in a park as well.
I think when we did the e-cigarettes, we just made it comparable to everywhere else that we had banned.
That's correct.
Currently, a lot of them are just the parking lots that are allowing in our city code. And those would have to be changed. Because it says that smoking is allowed in some of the parking lots if you go through the list, like Mercer Park, Napoleon, and some of those. So if you're going to do it, it would have to include all those, switching those over to current code. But I don't see any problem with Jim's idea is that there are some people out there that want to use the parks and they have to smoke, whether it's good for them or not. And for them not to enjoy the park if there's a certain area, whether it is the parking lot still or whether you just do a complete ban, that's the question.
So my reason for bringing up that complete ban before is I think that, you know, my reasoning for why I supported it prior because enforcement becomes an issue for me. And so, I mean, how are we going to, and maybe again, this is a tough conversation to have just kind of on the fly, but how are we going to then enforce that particularly designated area? You know, from my feeling and just encountering, you know, not only smokers in my family but in smokers in general, I mean, it is kind of, you know, somewhat of where you're talking is the need. And so having a designated area, I think, makes it really tough to enforce. And I think that it then really doesn't, you know, speak to why we're doing it in the first place in general. And so that's my take on why we should move forward on this particular ban and, you know, yeah.
I think a pro for having, excuse me, a designated area would be, so many of these are neighborhood parks. And if they can't smoke in the parks, they might be prone to go across the street and smoke on the sidewalk in the neighborhood. And we don't want that either. So I think Jim's idea of a designated area might be a positive thing.
I'm guessing you all talked about this before, so, you know, in the commission level or board of health level or whatever, so, yeah.
Come on up, Clay.
I don't think this is a convenience issue. It's a health issue. And smoking is not healthy. And secondhand smoke infringes on everyone in the area. So I think, and I think we're going in a direction that we need to go in, and that is a total ban on smoking and use of tobacco products in public areas. And I think it's encouraging more people to quit smoking. Most people that do smoke want to quit desperately, and they're trying to quit, as I think they understand, I know it's an addiction issue, but it's a health issue to the other people first and foremost. So in the general interest of the community and the individual citizens, I think a total ban is reasonable. And I know everybody always says, whoa, wait a minute, what about the other people's rights? The right to smoke on me is not a right that I can enjoy or support, but...
I guess I support the total ban. We're just here at the work session. We're communicating to the public that this is going to be on our radar, and then it will hopefully come back to us in a final ordinance form. So if the public wants to weigh in on that, they'll certainly have the opportunity to do that. But I think we need to send the clear signal that we do want to do the total ban. And if we have an overwhelming number of people that speak out, we can evaluate that. But I would like to support the total ban at this point.
Yeah, I think we want to promote healthy parks. We're trying to promote healthy neighborhoods. I think trying to carve out a particular area where smoking would be allowed is sending kind of a mixed message. I think there would be enforcement issues as well. So I think just a clear ban is a clearer message.
Yeah, okay. So that's, we'll proceed that way. I want to say one other thing, and I know I'm going to get in trouble for saying this, but I used to work in air pollution control. I did it for five years. I ran an air quality monitoring section. I know all about diffusion of smoke, diffusion of chemicals, diffusion of harmful substances if they're in the atmosphere. So that makes me think about situations where if somebody wants to smoke in, say, Hickory Hill Park, and they walk to a nearby hillside and pull out a cigar, they're going to do it. And it's not going to harm anybody except themselves. And it will harm them. My dad, I mean, my mother died of lung cancer, so I'm no fan of smoking at all. So, you know, my thinking, just sort of gut feeling, is there are situations where a person can smoke and not harm anybody except her or himself. So, but we have made a decision here about moving ahead. So what we want to have come to us is the proposal about a total ban within city parks and city trails, right, you said, Clay? And did you name other features or just? All? All property within city park stuff? Okay, that's clear. Yeah, good.
We will prepare it and bring it back to you.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you. Thank all, thank to all of you. Speaking of parks, I guess, I guess Julie, you're probably going to talk about parks and the park master plan and accessibility audit.
I'm here to talk to you about our 10-month process that we are just wrapping up now. We have our Parks Commission, they've been very involved in this process through the whole thing, as well as our staff members, Chad Dyson, our Recreation Superintendent, Manda Opus with our Communications, Parks and Recreation, Zach Hall behind him, Park Superintendent, and Kumi Morris, our Facility Manager. We've all been very involved with this and happy to show you what we've come out with this plan. The full plan is on the website, including all the appendix information, it's over 200 pages. So I'm sure you've read it very thoroughly at this point. I'm going to walk you through the process, what we've gone through and some of the highlights from it. There's a lot in that plan, and we certainly won't hit all of it.
I got to page 54.
Excellent.
Me too.
I will quiz you. Are you ready? Here we go. So we started out, this plan is unique, and it's unique because Iowa City is a unique community. We talked a lot about equity throughout our park system. We talked a lot about social equity. We talked about income levels. We talked a lot beyond the typical park master plan, which generally looks at how many acres per thousand people and is that spread out throughout your community. This plan really took that discussion to the next level. And I'm really proud of our staff and all the community members that participated because I think this is a really important part of this plan. And going forward, looking at ways that we want to make our parks available for everyone to gather in. And we want to make sure they're welcoming and open for all. So that's a real theme, this "gather here" theme through the entire master plan. So in the process, we started out by, first of all, reviewing the entire park system. So our consultants and our staff walked through every single park area that we have. And this is our active recreation areas. So like the forested areas at Hickory Hill Park, that's covered under the Natural Areas Plan, which you'll see in a few months. This is our active recreation areas. And that information is all included in the appendix of the report. So in the back of the report, or in the separate file on the website, you see a park-by-park inventory. They walked through each park, located where everything was. We tried to gather as much information as we could about how old the play structures were, the equipment, the shelters, tried to get as much information about all of that. And then this is where we looked at accessibility, physical accessibility in the parks. And it calls out on each one where there's areas for improvements, where there's areas, whether it's a small improvement that's needed, or in a few parks that they're just old and it's time that they get redesigned for kind of a complete overhaul. Then we, next, we had public engagement, and this took place October through June. We had over 500 residents take part in the master plan process. So very excited. Parks and Rec, of course, touches people in a lot of different ways, and we have a number of partner groups. We had most of them come to the table in various ways. We had stakeholder meetings. We had individual interviews with a few groups. We went out and did special outreach to a number of groups that we wanted to make sure got included. We had public open houses with the holiday market last December. And we had online ways for people to interact with this report. So I feel really good that we got a lot of input and touched a lot of people. Parks Commission met and talked about it twice during their meetings. A lot of opportunity for input, and we got a lot of input. So that was exciting. Then we next, through all that public input, developed the guiding principles of the report and the kind of the strategy. There's six items here. First of all, access is one of the main things we looked at. Physical access to the parks, equity, to make sure there was access to people in all areas of the city. Connections between the parks. Some of those are kind of tougher answers because we've got some areas, as you learned in the bicycle master plan, where getting the connecting trails is going to be difficult. This plan kind of called out some of those same things. And then building strong neighborhoods with the parks that are in it. Play, providing year-round recreation opportunities. So we heard people's requests for everything, you know, from our typical outdoor pool, summer activities, to ice skating and ice fishing. So people here in Iowa City want to be outdoors all year round, and they want us to provide activities and things for them to do that with all year round. Restore. We heard over and over, we want our kids to be able to play in the creeks. We want to get back to the river. The Iowa River is a great asset to the community. Let's not turn our backs on it anymore. So a lot of our plans, and it really fits well with what's going on with our Natural Areas Plan and the tree inventory, go along with this guiding principle of restoring the natural environment so people can use it, sustaining, making it places where people want to be outside playing. Educate. So important goal that we heard. Ensure that every child learns how to swim, safely rides a bicycle, and develops outdoor recreation skills. So everything from gardening to sports, to the new sports, you know, footsall, pickleball, those kind of things. We heard a great interest in making sure that we have programs and opportunities for people to not only enjoy those, but to learn how to do them in the first place. So every kid knows how to swim, so they're safe playing in the creeks or by the rivers. The other part of this that we talked about was integrating STEAM, the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math curriculums into what we do in recreation and parks, making sure that kids, what they learn at school, they can also experience as they play in our community. Sustaining, making design choices for consistency, branding, and longevity. So you'll see that we have architectural designs later on and choices made for our future buildings that help us have consistency throughout the building. So if a maintenance staff member is going to one park shelter and they need a light fixture, it's probably the same one they have in stock for all of our different shelters, and it's easier to maintain in that way. And people get used to the branding and the consistency of what those facilities look like through our parks. And then finally, measuring. Once we get underway with implementing this plan, we'll be back with you occasionally with measurements of how we're doing on implementing it. I want to point out something really nice and that I'm particularly proud of in our report. There's a lot of this report that goes to equity. And this, as I said, is different for our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. It took us quite a few conversations, even with our consultants, to say, this is really important to Iowa City. They heard it from our residents, and we kept coming back to this. So in our park planning efforts, it really talks about fostering the neighborhood and cultural identity. Although we want to have facilities throughout the parks that are easy to maintain and have that kind of branding, we understand that each neighborhood's a little bit different. And what one neighborhood wants is maybe different than what another neighborhood wants as far as the sports they play or the ways that they gather as a community. And we want to be open to that and able to do that. Parks facilities and services in all areas of the community. So looking to make sure that we are geographically spreading out our services throughout all residents. Being cognizant of our transportation barriers and realizing that there are residents that heavily rely on public transportation. So in those areas, making sure that they have park facilities closer to where they live and probably in more concentration so they can use them. Using the social equity toolkit. So for each park redesign, this commits us to doing extra outreach in the neighborhoods to make sure that we are assessing the character and the specific needs of the residents of that area, not just our general overall population needs. Providing non-gender-specific, family-friendly public restrooms. A lot of talk about this lately, but we, through this plan, are saying that restrooms in the future that we put in the parks will be single occupancy, available not only for families, but non-gender-specific at the same time. And then working to dismantle systemic barriers. We've come to an understanding with a lot of conversations that there's policies, procedures, and things we've done for a long time that maybe aren't as inviting to all members of our community. And this is just our way of saying we want to keep looking at those and working through them to find ways that we can invite and make sure that everybody wants to gather in our parks and use our recreation facilities. Finally, or the next step we did was review the open space planning. This is more the traditional park planning that you've seen in reports before, lots of maps in the overall park master plan. We looked district by district, not only how the parks are laid out, are there enough parks in that area? The parks were categorized based on kind of their primary activities. And the idea to make sure that each district within the city has a mix of those activities to make sure that there's not busy roads or something that are cutting off a park or a neighborhood and not able to access things to make sure that we have equal and equitable parks throughout the system. And then the work to prioritize our future park projects. So this is where we get into the nuts and bolts of what does all this plan mean and how do we implement it? And you'll see more of this as we move into the capital planning process. But this plan went through all of the parks. First of all, as I said, we looked at physical accessibility issues and kind of good news, bad news in all of this. I wouldn't tell you there's a lot of parks that are completely accessible, but there's a number of them that are pretty darn close. And so you'll see two lists in our capital planning. We have lists of parks that have small needs for accessibility. They may need a parking space, a curb cut, or some pathways to put in to make them more accessible. Or actually, the number one thing in a lot of parks is just us getting back and putting enough mulch in the playground areas to make the playgrounds fully accessible for people to get to the playground areas. And then there's larger maintenance needs or age of equipment. We, based out on about a 20-year lifespan of a piece of play equipment, so we'll try to get back to each park about every 20 to 22 years to redevelop or replace those larger pieces of equipment. Equity across the city. And that takes us, as I said, equity, neighborhood needs, priorities, and then leaving some room for those future trends. Because even a year ago, I'm not sure I would have known what pickleball was and how popular it was. Now that we have it at Mercer, you often see all eight courts busy in the morning. So gives us some flexibility to meet new community needs with that. Then here is what I talked about, the planning out. We have all of the neighborhood parks listed between now and 2029 on a schedule of when they would be redeveloped as an entirety. So 2018, probably not a surprise at all, Creekside, which we just finished the master plan, Cardigan, which the playground started going into today, actually, and Riverfront Crossings, which is moving very quickly. But then the row below here are where we look at the accessibility improvements. These are smaller ones. And these might surprise you. Highland Park, we just did this park about a year ago, two years ago. Beautiful new park. We didn't get all the pathways put in. So when we look at it from accessibility, it's missing those pathways. So this would say we'll go back in and get the pathways put in. Same thing, the Mercer Play Area, wonderful playground with lots of accessible equipment. It's missing the pathway between the playground and the shelter. So not a big, you know, a big project, but a lot of little projects to kind of bring those up. So we look at both larger projects and then the smaller fill-in kind of accessibility things over the next four years. And after that, placing out each of the parks for the larger redevelopments as we go down. Now, these are based on neighborhood parks. It doesn't include the larger projects yet, such as Eastside Sports Complex or redoing all of Lower City Park. Those aren't in this plan so far. But we do try to get everything else planned into place there. The other thing we looked at were priorities for our park annual improvement funds. This is some money we have in the capital budget each year. We'll be looking at replacing a number of the park signs. In fact, we were just talking Riverfront Crossings. Have you seen all the work going on? We don't have park signs designed for that yet, so we need to get signs in a number of our parks. And then working on site furnishings. One of the other things we're missing on the accessibility audit is handicap accessible picnic tables. So if we get a process going where we can add picnic tables throughout the parks and make them accessible picnic tables, that will help our accessibility rating right there. Getting our benches, we've had priority from the Parks Commission to add recycling throughout the parks. You may have noticed we have it at Terry True Blood this summer, and we've been adding it more and more at our athletic facilities. We have a challenge to add it even more so throughout our parks, so you'd be seeing that. And then shelter and facility maintenance. Our shelters throughout the city need new roofs, new to lodge TLC. Port maintenance, basketball courts, those kind of things have not been maintained quite as well as they should have over the number of years. And then leaving us some space for partner opportunities. Oftentimes, we have a neighborhood come with an idea for their park that's not in our schedule. They may come with funding, or they may get a PIN grant for some funding. We like to help out and see what we can do to make those things happen. And then emerging opportunities, you know, footsall, Gaga pits, pickleball, those are all three things we put in in the last year that probably hadn't heard of before we actually started to build them in the parks. So that's how all of the rest of this planning fills into the different years. We looked at architectural guidelines. The picture on the right probably looks familiar. It's Terry True Blood. As we did our public input on this, people are like, Terry True Blood Park is an awesome park, do it just like that, or build off of that. So a lot of our design guidelines actually build off that. There's nothing really amazingly changed to a lot of this. It's just refinements of it that we would hope to start using as a design character throughout the parks. The shelter and restroom that you'll see are the ones that were recently proposed for Happy Hollow. I would just caution you, as you know, the bids came in very high on that. So that is one thing we're still looking at, is will this be the final design of this plan? Is it something that we can afford? I think you're going to see some revisions that make it a little more cost-effective. Signage. We looked at signage options, talked with the community about those two, and guess what? They really like the work that's been done in the last couple of years. So we didn't see any reason to change it in a great way. We did find some options that are a little less expensive so that we can get more and more of the signs done so that they match, and you can see that branding throughout the, throughout the city. And that's it. It's been a fun project. We're nearing the finish line. We hope to bring it back to your final approval sometime later this fall. But once again, I commend the staff, the commission, just a number of residents that really took active voices. Even this afternoon, I got calls about, okay, was this in there? Did I get this? You know, tell me what you're going to talk to them about. So there's been a lot of interest in this plan. Thanks.
Okay, good deal, Julie. Do you have any questions for Julie or reactions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you and all the people involved. I don't know that I read all of it. I read a lot of it. And the detail in here is just incredible. I mean, it's mind-boggling how much detail there is. And so, you know, for those of you that were down in the weeds on all the detail, just commend you for getting this to the point of such a good plan and, you know, really laying out a program going forward of how we can really, you know, make the improvements and stuff, and how we can fit things into the CIP and those kinds of things. And they could really going to benefit us. And the whole equity piece of looking at what we have in different areas of the community and the accessibility and the distance and those kinds of things are just essential. I think they're going to, it kind of fits in with some stuff that John put into one of our packets in terms of complete neighborhoods, in terms of the parks being a huge part of that, and people having easy accessibility to those. So, great job. So, great job.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think I remember you being at one of the conversations at the gear training where I know for a fact that you spoke with her afterwards. And I'm assuming some of the iterations of this plan came from some of the consulting you may or may not have done with her, but you can tell. And so, I mean, I appreciate that work. And the one thing that I did have a question on is going back to that social equity toolkit. Did you mean like socioeconomic racial equity toolkit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, it means really looking in depth at the neighborhoods we're serving and doing extra outreach to make sure that we're hearing what their needs are when we go into redo a park. That's how we see it.
Great work. I use the parks a lot now. I used to not use the parks at all, so this is good.
I guess I have a question related to social equity as it pertains to growing spaces and community gardens and also edible landscaping. How high a priority do you place on edible landscaping? And secondly, what is the plan to increase growing opportunities for everyone throughout the city of Iowa City?
Sure. So we talked about community gardening quite a bit during this plan. Backyard Abundance, a number of other groups were part of our stakeholder groups that were there. It is kind of been, we've been doing it neighborhood by neighborhood and fitting it in, you know, growing the community gardens each year. This year, we had 200 plots that were all rented. So it shows that even though we expanded to more areas, they still expanded. Next year, we look to go into Creekside Park, into some of the new lots that have been added by Creekside, potentially one in the Peninsula neighborhood. We've really been working on it when a neighborhood contacts us and has an interest in it. We find that it's much easier to get it started when there's actual neighborhood around the park that has that high interest. But I think the rate that we've been growing at two or three gardens a year is sustainable at this point.
And I have a question relating to chemical-free signage in the park. You know, one of the things that I think the staff has done a wonderful job of is essentially our ban on all artificial pesticide use and herbicide use in the parks. How much does the plan focus on promoting that, that in fact it is a chem-free park? Is that something that's going to be part of the plan as well?
It actually was not included as a special statement in this plan, other than under the restore and sustainability section as goal. And I would clarify that we do have some limited chemical use in the parks still, for instance, with invasive species and sometimes with poison ivy, but in very limited designated uses. So I just want to caution that we're not completely 100% chemical-free. Generally, in any area kids are playing in and in athletic fields, we probably lead as far as using very little to no chemicals in those areas. But there's been a few places where we've still had to use some, so, yeah.
I forgot to mention my actual question to the point I was raising about that gear training. So one of the things you talked about was incorporating kind of those elements as far as when you're putting out, you're promoting, whether Beaver, the advertisement on your own book, kind of the Parks and Recreation, you know, program book, that, you know, different elements of accessibility is on there, not only from a multicultural standpoint as far as race ethnicity, but also from an accessibility standpoint as well. Is that going to be a part of kind of going forward? Have you had discussions about that? Is that currently in the plan?
It's not necessarily called out in the plan, other than we are really looking at all of our processes and procedures that go along with equity and making sure we're welcoming to all. I've got Amanda, our communications person, she's on me all the time looking at ways that we can make our publications and our communications more open and make sure that we are reaching out to everyone. So it's definitely an ongoing part of our conversation. One of the things we just changed recently is we used to have, require male or female designation for you to be able to register for our programs. Well, we actually don't need to know that for like 98% of our programs, so we just took it off the form.
What about for bathrooms?
Well, we're moving to the single-stall, non-gender-specific bathrooms as we do renovations in construction, but, yeah.
It's a very impressive plan, and I especially was taken by the inclusion of the social equity issue because it kind of tied with the study that Pauline's been working on in health and actually taking it to a very fine grain, you know, where you actually show specific areas where there is high priority with respect to social equity, which I think gives the council, for me anyway, a much better idea of where we need to focus our efforts. And then I also, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but I prepared a memo to council on this concept of complete neighborhoods. And as it relates to parks, I think the plan speaks the same language, more or less. I mean, one of the issues is that they be accessible, you know, and in some respects, Iowa City has a pretty good distribution of parks. But I would say that not all of them are complete in the sense that they provide a wide range of activities. And the reason I think that's important is that for a park to attract a wide range of users, you need a wide range of activities because people want different things, as you had noted. So the memo is basically emphasizing that within an easy walking distance or an easy biking distance, that everyone in Iowa City have an opportunity to experience a complete neighborhood, in part because it's those complete neighborhoods which are going to promote the social equity issues as well as social capital, the ability to get to know the people we share our neighborhoods with. So that's, that I think is the challenge because as the plan noted, in some of these areas of Iowa City, we, you know, we just don't have the facilities. There is one park on the west side of town, west of West High. How do we solve that problem? It's hard to acquire land when you've already built out your neighborhoods. So I think one strategy that I certainly have been advocating for and is in the plan in some of the recommendations is collaborating with the Iowa City Community School District. I know in our, the central district plan, which was, I think, also noted as having priority with respect to equity, where else are you going to do it? Again, the neighborhoods are built out. So fortunately, I think those, the schools offer an opportunity. In my view, the schools have tended not to focus on their outdoor spaces. So I think it would be a good collaboration between the city and the school district to, in a way, bring the school district's facilities, geo-bond, which is about facility equity, and focus on the outdoor spaces, which are really not part of that bond program. So I'm really excited by what the parks has done. I think it's really given us a much clearer idea of where we need to focus our efforts and, you know, the comprehensiveness of it is really extraordinary.
I found it interesting that it seemed to complement the bike master plan that we just went over at the last meeting. It just kind of goes along with that and really fits together well with the trails and the connectivity. And I was really impressed with that. I also was impressed with, there was a section in there, you talked about involving the community and even the maintenance of it because, living near the Willow Creek Park, and I heard that it's the master gardeners that are taking care of the flowers and the entrance, and it's just really beautiful, really makes it attractive to that entrance to Willow Creek Park, as well as, I have to make a note, I do love the wooden, it's old, the old wooden sign that says Willow Creek with 1972 on it. It's been well-maintained, so it's in good shape, and I like that. And I hope you keep that because with the master gardener flowering there, it looks really nice. And I also was impressed with the fact that with some of them, you're going to replace some of the playground up-surfacing area with a more rubberized because the wood chips just sometimes are not the safest.
I would say we won't be able to do that in very many locations.
Right, right.
It's very expensive.
It is expensive.
But I think that's one of the things we'll look at, is how do we get more accessibility at certain areas in each district as we go forward, so, yeah.
Well, I'd like to say there's a lot I like about the plan. Bravo, well done to you and to the consultants. I like, for example, its use of the racial and socioeconomic equity review toolkit and the emphasis on equity. I like the plan's linkages, as Pauline said, to the bike master plan, but also to the natural resources area study and to the tree inventory.
You'll be seeing both of those later this fall and winter, and yes, they all connect.
Yeah, and if I understand the plan correctly, I like its emphasis on filling specific gaps in the park system's service in terms of geography or service types rather than to focus on acquiring more park space. So focusing on what we have, improving, et cetera. Do I understand that correctly?
It is. I mean, there are some calls in different districts for, there are some areas that could use some more parkland, but I think the plan realizes that's a difficult and tall order right now. There's not a lot of land available. If land would become available in those districts, I would want to, I would hope you would consider adding to the parkland. But in the meantime, it gives us a real clear picture of how to use the land that we already have and how to utilize it and maximize its use.
Yeah, understood. I do have one question. I don't, I didn't see in your presentation the maps about walkability and transit. And they had shadowing associated with them and, you know, a quarter-mile walk radius or something. But frankly, I couldn't interpret them properly. So I don't know if you have one that you could show, but like with regard to the walkability maps, I was looking at that map in relation to one of the rezoning decisions we have this evening, and I couldn't make sense out of the circles and how they were drawn, so...
I don't actually have it that I can show you right now, but I can get with you after the meeting. I can look at it.
Yeah, if you could clarify that, that'd be terrific. I have a question for Jeff. Are you imagining that this will come back to us on our next formal meeting or maybe the one after it or something like that?
Yeah, shortly. I think we'll do what we did with the bike master plan or what we're proposing to do with the bike master plan, which is have you adopt it by resolution.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, I think you're hearing a big bravo. Thank you, Julie. Okay, we have, as our next item for our work session, thank you, Clay. Our two other commissioners who are departing now, Suzanne and Wayne, thanks for your good work. Okay, so our next topic is the preliminary fiscal year 2019 budget discussion. Did you want to say something to start, Jeff?
Yeah, just real briefly, this is a work session, this is the second one of these. Last year, we started this. It's just an opportunity for you to let us know of any budget priorities that you have going into staff's preparation. So department heads are pretty here, shortly here, will be pulling together their lists of requests for capital and operational needs. And then the Finance Department, City Manager's Office will be reviewing those. And again, as is tradition, presenting you our recommended budget in December for discussion in January, February before the March filing date with the state. So, yeah, this is really just an open discussion. I don't have specific questions for you. As you know, there are a lot of competing priorities for the dollars. The last two work sessions, you spent reviewing the bike master plan and now the parks master plan, both very aggressive plans, and those are layered on top of other aggressive plans and operational needs that aren't necessarily reflected in a strategic plan type of document. So any input that you can have, any guidance is appreciated. And anything that you don't think of tonight that you want to communicate to me, the sooner the better as we look into things.
So I think I'd like to begin, first by making a general comment. What I expect will happen tonight is that we will each mention particular suggestions, make particular suggestions about what could be included in the budget. But that does not necessarily mean that that's what the council majority or council as a whole wants to do. But we need to get those topics out on the table, if you will. And then, so with that, as sort of background, I want to mention like four topics that I'd like to emphasize right off the bat. One is, I would hope that our forthcoming budget will make significant investments in the major actions called for in our strategic plan, especially the Form-Based Code, the Bicycle Master Plan, the Climate Action Plan, and the Affordable Housing Action Plan. We don't want to end up with plans. We want to end up with action and on the ground that really affects and improves lives of people in our city. So that's the first thing. The second is, and you alluded to that, to this in your self-evaluation, no, never mind, and some other written document that we got from you, Jeff, we need to respond effectively to the expected disappearance of the state's backfill of commercial and industrial property tax revenue. And I know we've been expecting this to happen, but just to be clear, that's, it's an important thing. I think we also need to set aside a reasonable amount of funding for our fair share of expenses that might be associated with construction and operation of the proposed access center, Behavioral Health Access Center. I don't know how much, you know, because no firm decisions have been made, but I think we need to move in that direction. So there's that. And one other point, Jeff, as you know, when you and I talk with the people involved in the, what's it called, the 10 largest cities discussion?
Metro Coalition.
Metro Coalition, thank you. There's a sense that we need to tell our, the city's story better. That would be our story as Iowa City, but also the 10 largest cities as a whole. But not just tell a story, but tell a story more effectively to people out in the state. We got to find a way to do that effectively to, and I'm thinking in particular about people who live in rural areas or small towns and the legislators who represent them. So we might put a little bit of thought into that and find, you know, if there's some investment required to do that, well, there you go. We're also going to be developing a new strategic plan. So that will have budgetary implications for the fiscal year that we'll be talking about, so we need to take that into account. So those are some topics on the table.
Jim, could you just, I couldn't write quite fast. The first list, you're talking about our current strategic plan, you listed four major items that we've kind of started on. The bicycle plan, affordable housing, climate action, and what was the fourth one?
Yeah, good question.
Form-based code. Form-based code, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, in terms of the future strategic plan, I think we need to begin the process of developing a Form-Based Code for the downtown, and that could be a part of this budget. Now, I know we haven't decided that. I don't know if the council agrees or not, but that's what I think.
I have a few thoughts and projects. One of them ties to that presentation we just saw on the park system. And as I said, kind of in some ways reflective of the geo-bond for equity with, among the schools, among the school sites, make sure that they're equitable. I would want to make sure that Iowa City, from a geographic standpoint, has equity across town with respect to access and comprehensiveness of the park facilities. There are three areas specifically that were identified in the plan. Two of them are in my district. The third is, would be along Mormon Trek, as I recall. So that would be one thing to address the equity. And I would encourage, as I was suggesting in my memo, that the notion of complete neighborhoods require parks that have a comprehensive range of activities that are offered. That doesn't mean every park has to be comprehensive, but at least one would be. And that ties to the idea that these are places where the community as a whole can gather to build social capital. The second thing would be on the bike master plan. You know, we had that presentation, and, you know, I asked the question of what, how could we sort of profile, give a higher profile to the plan? And they mentioned that if, you know, Dodge and Governor are two projects that would, I think, give the program a stronger profile. Governor is already in the budget, so what I would be asking is combining with, or adding to Governor Dodge Street. Dodge is actually a more dangerous street in terms of collisions. It runs right along Happy Hollow, Horace Mann Elementary, College Green Park, and the two streets combined are a real east-west barrier in terms of pedestrian safety. I think one of the key issues in my view with the bike master plan moving forward is many of the, and we're going to be talking about this later tonight, but quickly, the most of the improvements are going to be on streets. So they're going to dramatically improve... to dramatically improve pedestrian safety and bicycle safety, as well as driver safety. The third thing would be Street Tree Planning Initiative. I talked about that before. You know, we've been seeing, partly due to construction, not only of projects on private property, but some of our own projects in public rights of way, a real loss of tree cover. That combined with the value of it with respect to climate action change and all the, you know, I've talked about before many times, the multiple values of a comprehensive and extensive urban canopy that, and I know we have some money budgeted for that, so it's really maybe a question of strategizing and prioritizing where that money goes. And I think, again, it could be tied to the Bike Master Plan and the Park Master Plan.
Others?
So, I think for me, I would agree with John. I didn't know he was going to talk about tree coverage, but it's hot outside, and so we need more trees. You've kind of turned my, turned me around for that. I would agree with Jim on the Form of Action Plan. I think Rockney talked about edible landscapes, and I think some of us have had conversations with backyard abundance. I know this is an interesting time to talk about it in conjunction with the Park Master Plan, and so if we were going to make that priority, I think it's great to talk about it right now to see how we can include that. If not, you know, it sounds like moving forward, but I think that the element would be kind of the educational component, some of the other things. And even though that the community is maybe not asking for it, this is one of those things that I feel like if we do it, they will come. I mean, if we're, if we're, if we can advertise in a way to do it, they will come. And so, the other part of it would be fleshing out opportunities for economic developments for people of color. We've done some of that work. I think it was hugely successful. I'd want to see what, what more we can we increase from a funding standpoint to ensure that it's not just about kind of the educational component, but how can we provide forgivable loans or other things to ensure that this is happening in our area? I mean, I'd, I'd hope for one day be able to say that, from a business perspective in Iowa City, not only that we have kind of an entrepreneurial hub for people of color to come and, you know, do that in some of those same ways that we have it for other businesses, but also that, you know, it's 50%, you know, from a standpoint, not only when we're talking about people of color, but also women as well. I don't necessarily know all the, the owners of all the different businesses, but just from what I do know, I still think that we could considerably do more from a just general women's standpoint. I would say that one of the things I've relatively missed, and I didn't necessarily bring up in Strategic Plan, was just diversifying our staff. And so, I know that we've had that conversation on the Rockney, that I briefly talked about a little bit, maybe just like walking out of a council meeting around kind of that, now I'm forgetting the name, starts with a C, commission, something commission?
Civil service.
Civil service, yeah, civil service, and how we can effectively, I mean, it's a barrier. And so, how can we effectively mitigate that particular barrier, and it may, may cause more funding? I know that we did some interesting things when it came to the police department as far as how we were kind of tricky with our funding and able to diversify our staff, more so than we would have been able to do without that. So, how can we effectively plan for that moving forward, not only obviously within our police department, but other departments as well? And last thing is about mental health. I know that we're talking about the cost of the Crisis, or the Access Center, and also the training that officers are going through as well. One of the things that I also want us to focus on has been around kind of our people with disabilities, just in our area, with intellectual disabilities. I know from a county perspective that, I think Rod was in the county, or was at the state level, I don't know, six months to eight months ago, advocating for why there were significant cuts to kind of Johnson County and their ability to, you know, have case managers for people with disabilities in our area. And so, I don't know if we've filled that gap. And again, whenever I see a gap, especially from an equity standpoint, I feel like it's incumbent on government to kind of step in and, and help in some way. It may not necessarily be monetarily, but what can we do from our own ability to help empower our residents and individuals that live within our, our boundaries? And so, again, that's a little separate issue than obviously the, I think the crisis in the intervention training the Access Center is focused on one area, which I think is important, but also we have a significant amount of people with disabilities in our community that I know that we haven't necessarily talked to, the council of, I know that our staff work with, especially the Parks and Rec Department, work with considerable amount. And so, what are we doing in that range? Because I know there's been a cut in funding, and I want to make sure that we're doing what we can do. Those are my things.
Anybody else?
One thing I'd, I'd like to see, speaking of equity, is we're getting the new transit buses. I think it's a time to, to maybe look at our routes and have better access, equal access to, to all folks. It came out of the park study that there, there is some difficulty in getting someplace. Some, the bus stop is maybe half a mile away from, from the parks, so they ride the bus and then they have to walk, and maybe rearranging that. And we've heard from folks on the east side of town that, that those bus routes aren't as frequent as some of the ones on the south or the west part of town, or, or even the timing of the bus routes. And I, I think that's important. We're still hearing about the need for the shelters, and I know we budgeted for shelters, but I think there's still a need for that, to have safe places for people to wait for the buses. And I think that's important. And then I can't stress enough the importance of the Behavioral Access Center. I mean, we're hearing from the law enforcement folks that yesterday wouldn't have been soon enough to have something like this in place, and it really is important, and we really need to look at the funding for that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would like to. You know, I think in, it's good that this is sort of following up on our Parks Master Plan, because I think the, one of the things that I would like to see more of in that particular plan in terms of our funding priorities, is very clear goals about providing low-cost growing opportunities for everyone in the community, and to really commit that in terms of a budget plan. I understand that this process, this is the beginning of a conversation, not the end, the beginning of a dialogue, not stopping it. But I think with that in mind, I think we need to really have a community guideline, or dialogue about very clear goals about what we will do in terms of over time, what our goals are for growing spaces. I think that the proposal, I mean, obviously, I know we can't quote on, you know, particular projects, but I think the, the proposal by Fred Meyer is the type of project that I think accomplishes a lot of our goals in terms of increasing low-cost growing opportunities, providing destination-type play spaces. And so, I would really hope that we could come up with a similar type concept in terms of budget and priorities, because that I don't think has been emphasized enough so far, although we've made a lot of progress on that. A lot of you know, and a lot of you know that I'm a big fan of the University Program, but I think now is the time for us to begin the conversation. Is there a way that we can reimagine and re-envision that program? One, whether we can use those dollars more effectively than we are now. I mean, right now, we're limited to essentially a single-family model. So, I'm hoping that as we then reconvene in, in January, that we'll get a, maybe a budget proposal, what we'll think about after consultation with various stakeholders, whether there's a way that we could more effectively participate in this program to sort of achieve our goals. And I think that's really going to be key now that we have some of the limitations in terms of our regulatory tools that are available. And the third thing is, I think, one of the things that really struck me about that neighborhood plan, about how it is so strong, is this question of neighborhood and cultural identity within those neighborhoods. And how do we achieve that? I think one thing that we would do is to adopt some sort of participatory budgeting framework for our various neighborhoods. So, I'm hoping that we can evaluate how we more effectively bring in those stakeholders, because we all have blind spots, and I think we're more likely to be more culturally attuned if we actually incorporate them in the decision-making process to the extent that we can. Of course, as Jeff talks about, there are competing priorities, and that has limitations as well in terms of, you know, each person sort of views their own particular point of view. But that said, I think we need to really try to focus on that. So, those are the three areas that I was planning on talking about, although I also saw Dan Cummins' article on the art factory. And I'm hoping at some point, we can incorporate a true creative space that we can use downtown. Easier said than done, but I think that's something hopefully we can achieve at some point in the future as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, too.
Yeah.
Susan, you have another chance?
Yeah. I don't think there's anything that anybody's mentioned that I don't agree with from the standpoint that it's important and, in an ideal world, I would support. Again, it comes down to the competing priorities, you know, as we've, as we've talked about. And there's never, there's never enough money to, to do all the things that we'd like to do and to do them as fast as we would like. I guess one of the things, and I'll come at this a little bit differently maybe, and it probably won't surprise any of you, one of my key priorities is that whatever we do continues to keep our financial position in a very, very strong, keeps us in a strong financial position. That means continuing to build our reserves. You know, Jeff has, has talked about, and we've all talked about it different times, the fact that the backfill coming from the state will probably end at some point. And when that happens, that's going to hit us hard. And that's when we're going to have to start using those reserves instead of building those reserves. And so, as long as we have that backfill, I think it's imperative that we continue to build those reserves. I think as we look at some of these different ideas and ways of spending money, I think one of the things we have to be really cautious of is what does that mean in terms of the demands that we're placing on our staff? I think one of the things that, to me, has be, become, I think, really apparent, I think we've heard it more from some staff over the past six or eight months, is we passed a very, very aggressive and bold strategic plan about a year and a half going on two years ago. And we've accomplished a lot, but it has also put an awful lot of stress on our staff. We've cut, you know, 40 staff over the last few years and got, you know, a leaner and more sustainable number of staff for going forward. And I think we just have to be really careful that as we, as we look at the budget and we look at how we're going to spend money and what kind of programming that kind of, that needs, or, you know, anytime we hire a consultant, that's not just hiring, hiring a consultant. That is a lot of staff time that goes into working with that consultant and those kinds of things. So, I just, I hope that as we get into the, the nuts and bolts of the budget, that we kind of keep those things in mind, because I think everything that everybody has mentioned are great ideas, okay? I liked some of your creative ideas, Rockney, with the University Program. Maybe there's some way of re-imagining that, that we can do some things cheaper and more effectively than, than what we've done in the past. But I think to be sustainable, we not only have to really keep focusing on our budget, I hope we can continue to decrease our tax levy, but sustainability also means our staff. We have got to be, we have a lot of very, very good people that work for the city, and we've got to be careful that we don't burn them out. And I'm afraid with the load that we've put on them over the last 18 months, that we, we've just got to be really careful, because I think we've pushed them hard. I think they've done a lot of great things. I think they're working hard to get those things done for us. We've got to be careful we don't push too hard, so that, and that's important as we go forward.
I just have just a couple things. The Access Center is number one on my priority list for you guys to do in the next year. Parks, I would say, would be number two, the Master Plan, because it really helps the most people in our city. Bicycle Plan is way down on my list, and I'll tell you that $14 million over five years seems to be a lot of money for 3.5% of our commuters or people. I know there's a very strong bicycle group that's very vocal, but you talk to people that don't bike, they think that $14 million over so many years is a lot of money. And then, when it goes along with this Gilbert Street going to three lanes, the number of people that says, "You've got to be kidding." So, I think be very careful as we're moving ahead, if we're budgeting for this, because I know we're going to be talking about this over the next six months, that, that I've already heard people say, "Well, now that we have this process where we can do a petition to have it put on the ballot," they're that serious about Gilbert Street. So, I don't think Gilbert Street's just a done deal as some, some people think with the park plan. So, when we're budgeting, looking at budget priorities, I mean, there's, there's certain areas that I think we should be putting our money that help the most people, and bicycles, from what we talked about at the last meeting, 3.5% of our commuters or people that bike. I mean, we want to get it up to 5%, but that's still a very small minority of number of people in the city. So, just a different look on it.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks, everybody.
I would just mention two things real quick, because I'm taking a minute. It's in, one, return on investment. And so, as we're thinking about Strategic Plan priorities, can you give us some type of metric back that speaks to, I think John mentioned in the last meeting, the affordable housing, like what dent are we making? I mean, instead of just continually doing it, I mean, we want some return on investment. And then going back to Susan's point about staff and kind of sustainability, I know that we get our, some of those things as far as what's going on, but what's happening to make sure that we're promoting a healthy culture within our own city staff? I don't think we, we talk about that enough as far as, you know, are you having fun? Do you enjoy coming to work? I mean, is this a great place to work? I mean, I think that you're the city staff, and so if you're, if it's, if it's not the case, then it's going to bleed into the community. I think that's a bad thing. Done.
All right. One minute, I count it. Did you get what she needed, Jeff?
Uh, yeah.
There's not enough money for all the priorities.
Got some things to work with.
Yeah, we'll revisit this, I don't know, come January, right? All right, so we're going to have to, what's the right verb here? Adjourned as a work session until after the formal meeting, and we'll pick up with clarification of agenda items.
Which we won't need to do at that point.
Well, some things are going to be said.
We still have to do kids.
Okay, so, thank you all. The first has to do with item 2D5, the City Manager's Signature Authority. And I know we already voted on it, and it's, it's already a done deal, but as I read it, it seemed to me that the, the delegation of authority was, felt pretty broad. There, there were some dollar amounts in that that kind of surprised me, but we didn't have a chance to talk about it at all. So, I wonder if, if Jeff, maybe you could make a few comments about the, or maybe Eleanor, because I don't know really who, who drafted this, about the, the delegation of signature authority.
Yeah, the intent certainly was not to, to broaden my authority, but really to, I think, expedite some, some actions that we feel are fairly routine. And even though it's passed, certainly, I don't want to create any type of situation where you're uncomfortable with the signature authority I have. That's a delicate issue, I understand. Probably the biggest thing had to deal with the, the dispersment of community development dollars. So, particularly those of you that have served on EDC before, you know that you'll have groups come to you and you recommend funding. It's Film Scene, Angler, Riverside Theater, EDC, and a whole number of other entities that you recommend funding for. What typically happens is, is you recommend the funding, we budget for that amount, and the full council approves the budget. In the past, we've been a little inconsistent with how we've been dispersing those funds. I think technically, in all cases, we should have come back to you, and, and I think in most cases, we did. We came back to the council for dispersment of those funds. This would just give me the authority, assuming it's been vetted in the, by the EDC Committee, and it's been in the, in the full, adopted in, in the budget. We're going to do a better job in the budget in the Economic Development Section of spelling out exactly what those individual dispersments are going forward. Right now, they're lumped into a single line item. The second piece would be temporary construction easements on, on city property with a duration of not exceeding a year. This doesn't come up much, but again, this would be a short-term use of city property. I think the, the most recent example would be for a developer that needs to do some test, soil testing on city property. So, we talked about the Augusta Place. They needed to do some soil sampling on that property to prepare for the construction. Who's best to approve that? Does that need to go through Public Works, City Manager, Council? We felt as long as it's a, a use of city property for less than a year, that the City Manager Authority was okay. Anything, any use of, construction use of city property beyond a year would still come to you. The Town Crest Grant Program doesn't exist anymore, so we, we stripped that out.
And then the final one is leases of real property for a term of three years or less. That came from my office, just, and there's an example on the, or it was a suggestion by my office. There's an example on your agenda this time, which was the Ashton House, the Project Green use of the Ashton House for two years. So, it's, it's pretty minimal space. It, it took more time to accomplish that because we have to go through the council process. I mean, it was really those kind of items. And the 150, and then the grant funding, when we're getting money, and we have a match that is not exceeding $150,000, which is consistent with the City Manager's spending authority, otherwise also seemed reasonable, because there are rarely instances in which we will deny grant funding.
Okay. The other thing I'd point out is, just because I have the signature authority to do it, oftentimes if I feel there's a political sensitivity to the issue, I'll still oftentimes if I feel there's a political sensitivity to the issue, I'll still, I'll still bring it to you.
Yeah.
Understand that. Okay. Thanks. Uh, with regard to item 2D7 and the share, space sharing agreement with the county ambulance service, I just wanted to note that publicly, uh, and especially if Bob Welsh is watching because he's so happy about how well we're, uh, the various local governments are cooperating with one another. But it's really good to see us extending that, um, agreement with the county with regard to, um, um, Fire Station Number Four and letting them use some of the space there. So, just very pleased to see that. All right. That's all I wanted to do with regard to agenda items that we haven't already processed.
Real quick, I know that we've already passed it and again, I'm supportive of it, so it's not an issue of that. Item 14, just going back, because you kind of, it was quick interplay and then I didn't want to spend too much time talking about it, the land banking guidelines. For the restricted for the city money, that city money is restricted, that's only their restriction. Like, for example, the, um, Affordable Housing Coalition can use other dollars to spend on whatever property they choose to see. Okay. I, I just got confused when you kind of said it too quick.
It, the affordable, uh, location, housing location model only deals with those situations when city funds are involved. And so, if, you're right, if, if different firm wants to do it on their own, a nonprofit or for-profit, that's both in their right.
Okay. Should we turn to, to, to the first info packet? That'd be July 20th. I, I want to say something about IP number three, which is an article that appeared in Politico concerning the real risks that cities face. I found that really interesting to read. Uh, it, and for people who are watching, this involves mayors, urbanists and other thinkers pointing out threats that cities really will be facing in the future, rather than sort of dreamed-up worries about, um, rampant crime increasing and that kind of thing. I mean, crime's a significant challenge, but not in the way some people talk about it. Uh, and I, when I read that, I thought, man, that would be a really good, maybe this is the scholar part of me talking, but man, that would be a really good topic for some kind of public discussion, orienting around that particular article. So, we could kind of help us and the members of the public look ahead to, uh, you know, what's, what's at stake with regard to the coming of autonomous vehicles, for example, uh, and, and all the other topics addressed in, in this particular article. Anyhow, I, I found that article really to be quite fascinating and well worth talking about, uh, discussing in, in detail.
Yeah, I thought, I would agree, Jim. I thought it was really interesting and the, I think the challenge in reading that also is looking at, I think some of those are much bigger risk to much larger urban areas than ours, um, but some not. I mean, some are a risk for us very, very much as well. So, it was interesting, though.
Go back to IP four again, and, and Rockney's request. I am very much in favor of approving funding and having him go, uh, because he'd said it's like two days, a jam-packed with, uh, sustainability measures. And I was thinking some of those, Rockney could almost present, because some of the things are things that we're already doing as a city, which was good to see. But then there were other really neat things that I want to hear back about, like the fueling fleets with compressed natural gas. That sounded really interesting, using like from the landfill and, and the methane from that to, to turn into fuel. I think that's just really fascinating. Would like to hear about that.
I was pretty curious about the Community Growers Program for youth in Des Moines.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, it was all sorts of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it's pretty inexpensive. We're not talking about big bucks or something. Uh, I don't know. IP seven, there's this ribbon cuttings for New Hoover, Lucas and Weber on the 21st of August. I intend to go to each of those, help cut the ribbon stuff. Anything else? Anything else on the July 20th packet? Okay, I don't see anything, so, hear anything. July 27?
XIC.
Hi, Kelly, we need to sound off here.
I can do August 16th and September 21st.
Actually, are those dates right, on September?
Not.
When I, I thought when I looked at my calendar, the Wednesdays are 6, 13th, 20th and 27th. 7th, 14th.
Do you have to do the 16th? Can you, because that, that was a date I had.
No, I don't have to. Then I'll do September 20th.
I'd like to do August 9th. And I say that because it's, I'm, I'm due and I can't do, no, I can't do it on the 9th, never mind, excuse me. Missed read my own notes.
I'll do, I can do September 6th. What?
Well, no, September 6th.
You want to do 6th?
Yeah.
Okay.
August 30th.
That's fine.
August 30th.
Oh, well.
I'll do the, has anyone called the 23rd yet?
I'd like to, because.
Oh, you want to do it?
Yeah, if, if I could. 23rd.
I'm doing the 16th.
I could do the 4th of October.
What have you got left?
Uh, yeah, what have you got left?
I think the 9th, the 13th and the 27th.
So, I can do the 13th, sorry, Pauline, I jumped.
Oh, no, you can, you'd rather do the 20th.
If she can do the 6th, I can do the 13th.
Oh, the 16th, okay. You're good?
Yeah.
13?
Yeah.
I'll do the 6th.
27th, I'm sorry.
I'll do September 27th.
My birthday's the next day, so just remember, shout out, please.
Just remember.
August 9th.
I can do August 9th.
Oh, I thought Jim said he, I thought you said you could do August 9th.
23rd.
Oh, 23rd.
I can do the 9th.
August 23rd.
Kingsley, 9.
Does that fill it out?
Yep.
Good deal. Okay. Uh, other items? IP six, um, the resignation letter from Doug Boothroy. Uh, I, I just want to say, I found it to be a really lovely, um, sort of heartfelt memo, uh, that really, um, affected me. I know that, I, I, and Doug has served, uh, the city so admirably for 42 years. Uh, and a lot of knowledge will be going with Doug when he departs. And part of what I thought when I read that is, uh, maybe Channel Four could do like, I don't know, 15-minute interview or something like that with Doug, uh, asking him what's changed over 42 years, what he's learned, what his major challenges have been, what he's most proud of, you know, that kind of thing.
Wish the other staff was here to say, to, to hear you say that, because 15 minutes and Doug, all of that.
An hour and 15 minutes.
Yeah, so maybe a half hour, I don't know. That's for.
Be a four-part mini-series.
But, uh, you know, he's, he's, um, we should take advantage of the experience he has accumulated and try to learn from it.
Good idea.
Other items?
I'd like to thank John for IP seven. Um, thought there was some good stuff in there, so, kind of fit in a lot with some of the stuff we're talking about tonight, but good to see stuff from different perspectives, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm guessing it'll come back when we do our strategic plan discussion?
Yeah, I hope so. I, I hope it implanted in your minds, um, uh, because I, I did feel that it tied together a number of things that, you know, we've been talking about and that I've been thinking about for years as to how, how I mentioned when we talk budget, about that whole fine grain issue, you know, that we tend to see some data in aggregate. And so, between the invest health and the, um, Parks Master Plan, I think there was some real insight into how you need to dig a little deeper. And so, I think the complete neighborhoods might be a way to approach that.
And then IP nine, I was just glad to see that we're doing the community-wide survey. It'd be interesting to see kind of the comparison between the last one and this one. And I know there'll be a little bit different methodology on some things and I think it's always good to try and get that kind of information community-wide and see what people are thinking about the city.
Yeah, I was, I'm wondering about languages other than English and Spanish.
Yes, we reached out to, uh, NCS to make sure that there would be options for that. To mail out all 1,800 or 2,200 and, uh, more than those two languages becomes cost prohibitive, but they did assure us that there will be options if we want to have people, say, come in and use our language line and take it in person here, or if we want to translate documents ourselves and make sure that we distribute those to the folks that, um, that want to participate in the survey and neither English or Spanish is their first language. Um, what we would do is include small cards in with the mailings that expresses if you want to, uh, take this in a different language, then you, uh, can contact us and we'll make it happen.
Okay. On IP number eight, if I can jump to it, Sue Duhigg asked us a question which we need to answer. You may remember, uh, there's a memo from Sue concerning a variance of the housing code that the Board of Appeals granted on July 13th for a building to be constructed at 820 Cross Park Avenue. Uh, she tells us that a supermajority of the council could overturn the variance if it so desires. So, the question is, do we want to consider, um, vetoing the variance? And I can tell you, I don't.
I don't. This is for the chronically homeless housing. And so, it's got some variances that, because of that specific population, that they think makes sense to minimize problems that they might have and make it more conducive to those individuals. So, I felt comfortable with the variance.
So, we're okay to just leave it as it is, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, anything else? Anything else? So, does anybody have any other items to bring up there? Okay, that's it for the work session, correct? Okay, so, we're going to adjourn the work session and turn to our executive session, right?
Correct.